The sixth of eight public hearings to provide the public with an opportunity to comment. Propose options for changes in MTA fares, tolls, affected transportation on MTA subways, buses, commuter railroads, and nine bridges and tunnels in the Staten Island Railway. To make the public aware of these hearings, advertisements were published in over twenty multilingual print media outlets throughout the region. Notices of the hearings were also published in press releases and posted on the MTA website along with multilingual signs in stations, buses, and trains. Adjustments to the MTA's fares and tolls are necessary for the MTA to fulfill its legal obligation of a balanced budget. While the budget for this year will be balanced due to lower than anticipated dedicated taxes and farebox revenue, the MTA is projecting significant deficits in future years. Without these adjustments and new sources of recurring revenue, those deficits will grow larger via the customer service staff and further increases in fares and tolls. The MTA's website, mta.info, describes these proposed options in detail as well as information, including a presentation that is available outside the hearing room, where we have staff available to answer your questions you may have and take your written comments if you do not wish to speak this evening. We encourage the public also to comment via our website or by mail to MTA Government Affairs to Broadway, 20th Floor, New York, New York, 10004. This hearing is an opportunity for the members of the public to comment on the proposed options and the members of the MTA Board Directors and senior leadership are here to listen. And I want to emphasize that every bit of public comment, spoken comments tonight and other hearings, all correspondence, emails, phone calls, comment cards will be transcribed and incorporated into the official record and provided to all board members so they can review them prior to final consideration of the fare and toll proposals. I also want to emphasize that staff is on hand this evening to answer any questions you may have on the proposed options as well as service-related questions. And because we know a lot of you are planning for the L Project as much as we have been, we have staff on hands tonight to answer any questions to help you plan any route changes that you may have come the end of April, when we have a Brooklyn-only L plus six bus routes, additional subway services in operation. We also are continuing this outreach this week in April through April to make sure we work together to best navigate this change and the latest information is available. So I'd encourage you to stop by the L Project table and learn how to sign up for our weekly newsletter and follow the L Project hashtag on Twitter so you can join in our upcoming events if it's of interest. Now let me briefly describe the procedures for tonight's hearing. I will call the names of people who have registered to speak in the order in which they are registered. For example, if some have registered online or by mail, we will call on them first. We opened the onsite registration today at 4:00 PM and will remain open until 8:00 PM. And we will remain here until all registered speakers are heard. If you have pre-registered, please make sure you see staff outside so that we know you are here with us tonight. When your name is called, please proceed to the nearest microphone located in each aisle and give your registration tab to the usher. When you approach the microphone, please provide your name and any affiliation you wish to announce so that we have it for the record. And this is important. So we can be fair to all speakers, we ask you to keep your remarks to our limit of two minutes. The clock below will indicate how much time you have remaining and a warning light will remind you you have thirty seconds to wrap up your remarks. Now if you run out of time, remember you can submit complete written testimony to supplement your testimony. This hearing site is accessible for those with mobility impaired, sign language interpreters are also here with us tonight. The restrooms are located through the doors in the back. Please silence yourself. Thank you for listening to all that.
Andy Byford sent the signal.
Today's date is December 10th and the time is 5:07 PM. The hearing site is Long Island University, Cumbell Theater for the Performing Arts in Brooklyn, New York. I'd like to now introduce members of the MTA Board and senior leadership with us tonight. Acting MTA Chairman Fernando Ferrer, Board Member Andrew Albert, Board Member Norman Brown, Board Member Polly Troppenberg, Board Member Neil Zuckerman. Senior MTA Leadership with us this evening, MTA New York City Transit President Andy Byford, MTA Bridges and Tunnels President Cedric Fulton, MTA Bus Vice President Craig Our first public speaker is Yisani Torres.
Tim Ellis didn't mention Philo Bang. They weren't supposed to be here tonight. They don't have name tags, they're just there to listen.
My name is Yisani Torres. I'm Assistant Advocate for the Brooklyn Center for Independence of the Disabled. I speak today to oppose Option Two of the MTA's proposal. This would increase in the base fare from $2.75 to $3, which would affect people who use Accessoride unfairly. Since the Accessoride fare is tied to the base fare, this proposal would increase our fares by 9.1%, a much higher percentage increase than other riders would get. This is an important issue for many of us who use Accessoride. In fact, on November 26th, my organization joined eleven other disability groups in a letter to the Board urging you to reject an increase in the base fare. I have copies of the letters here for you. Some of our groups opposed a fare hike altogether because we all agree that an increase in the base fare is the wrong move by the Board. As we wrote in our letter, and I quote, "Accessoride is notoriously unreliable and often results in significant delays for its users who do not have alternative forms of transportation for work, medical care, and social activities." The MTA is making efforts to improve Accessoride services, including an innovative on-demand pilot test which we hope the MTA will expand. But unlikely, the subway and bus riders, most Accessoride riders must book the day before for a ride. And the erratic nature of the service deters many people from seeking increased employment opportunities. Until Accessoride service is improved for all its riders, it's particularly unfair to consider a fare hike. I can tell you many, many stories of missed pickups, late pickups, and long rides, the kinds of service no one else has to put up with. We do not deserve a fare hike and we urge you to reject it. Thank you.
Thank you. Brianna Edwards, followed by Mr. X.
Oh God.
Ronnie Hakeham's not here.
Mr. X.
Oh no.
Oh. Everybody's gonna frown on him. Oh yeah, they getting ready for it.
Hello, my name is Sienna Edwards and today I'm with EVC. And we're doing a project on the MTA and how it disenfranchises against people of color and people of... and those who don't make as much as others. I have a few questions for you today. My first question is, do you purposely... do you purposely...
Raise the fares?
Do you purposely put up flashy displays in order to pacify the people instead of actually fixing the old system? Because the system is a hundred years old and it's basically an accident waiting to happen. I don't know how you've managed to get away with not being sued for so long because this is a train wreck waiting to happen. Those with disabilities have a struggle to get to where they need to go. Ninety percent of stations are not accessible for those with disabilities and the ones that are in very poor conditions.
Ronnie Hakeham is here.
Also, I don't believe this fare hike is going to help at all because... this fare hike is not gonna help at all because a lot of people can't afford the fare as it is right now. It's $2.75 adds up very fast, especially for those who have to pay the single ride every single day. Most people who had the monthly, they get away with only paying $5 at the base fare, whereas for us, we can spend up to over $100 every single day.
Thank you. Mr. X, followed by Jason Fenero.
Oh God, I go...
You know what I could be doing right now? I could be at home watching Monday Night Raw, but instead I'm babysitting you. Which is what I did at Brooklyn College two weeks ago today. No, sorry, two weeks, yeah, two weeks, no, sorry. Sorry, incorrect. I could be at home watching Monday Night Raw, but I'm babysitting you. Okay, do you know what the MTA stands for? It stands for Money Phone Away. We don't have the second hour subway, we don't have the second hour subway, we don't have ESET access. We have unused trap net that runs between the Brooklyn Aquarium and Ocean Park that closed in 1954. You should use it if you're keeping it. You picked a bad place to hold this public hearing. Here in Brooklyn, you should hold it at Brooklyn College. The auditorium you used in the past has more seats and is more wheelchair accessible compared to this. This reminds me of Hostess College. Okay? Do you know who Ronnie and Polly could pass for? The fabulous Moolah Mania, the two pieces of popcorn stuck on stoop, I don't know what's gotten into them.
Oh God.
Ronnie decided to hold after this public hearing in a timely manner. She held two satellite public hearings in Manhattan. Both were scheduled at 7:00 AM. I wrapped up both sites early, first of all, first of all, I had the first speaker. And regarding the one that was held last Tuesday in the headquarters, headquarters building, some individuals were starting, I was waiting to answer the customer service officer. The night the customer was... No, I wasn't there for that. I was there for the public hearing. Okay? So Ronnie, as the current MTA head, if you hold public hearings at Three Stone Street in the Binsweet Room, you need to tell the builder-owner, you need to tell the guard, tell everyone what's happening. And as I said before, you need to advertise these public hearings in a timely manner. You need to attend regularly unless you're pregnant.
Oh God.
Sir, please wrap up your remarks.
And also, do you...
Sir, we have a number of speakers this evening. Please wrap up your remarks. Thank you. Our next speaker is Jason Fenero, followed by David Paul Gerper.
As an Amazon employee, I totally go against the fare and toll increases. Why? I have to commute ninety minutes from Bonham Hill, Brooklyn, that's like five minutes away from here, all the way to the west shore of San Lani, four times a week. Especially those that have way longer commute than I have. Let's say from Montauk to Penn Station. Under the proposal, they will have to pay $500 a whole month. That goes on up. While I receive a whole week, that all goes towards a monthly ticket between Montauk and Penn Station. But a couple of things have to be done. One, the tracks have to be clean because the tracks right now in the nearby station that we have are disgusting and they're... So it is a disgrace. Number two, all stations have to be ADA accessible because right now, as we know, fifteen percent of the stations are ADA accessible. So technically, we are fine by the fans because we're not complying with the ADA. And second of all, we need more communication. That's why we have people like Andy Byford, that we have high hopes. And he's gonna bring our subway system into the 21st century. And he knows that I have 100% of his support.
Just like you know, this is joined by AKA Managing Director Ronnie Hakeham and AKA Long Islander President Philo Bang. Our next speaker is David Paul Gerper, followed by Fernanda Espinoza.
Good evening. Is this a board meeting or is this half a board meeting? There are five empty seats here. So where's the rest of the board members right now? We all here want to know where is the rest of them? Are there MRI, MIA? Does Chuck Norris have to go and look for them?
Oh God.
Anyway, I'm talking about you things here. You wanna know the reason why the fare hikes are gonna take place? Take it at this. Those people that...
I'd like to see why. This is the reason why. Fair evasion. People notch-a-lining, walking through the gates here. If you can see it right here? I can't hear where they're standing.
They're notch-a-lining, walking through the gates. Now, people think... without iPhones and going through the gates or through the back of the bus here, shame, shame. Back of the bus itself when the rest of us, us working class, have to pay the full fare. It's not fair for everybody. And as for the New York City Transit themselves, you cannot run a system if your conductors have making announcements saying that the J train, you can transit to the J when the J is not running in Manhattan this past weekend and for the next several weekends. You cannot have wrong service alerts such as the BM15 that says it's good service and then when they don't run on Sundays. And to add insult to injury, you cannot have a service notice with all these express routes going for the Hero Carey Tunnel on weekends when most of them don't run. And the point is, the fare has to be raised, but it has to be... You want to, then get after the fare beaters. Make them pay. Lock them up or give them summonses. Make them pay. If they could pay $200, $200 for sneakers and $900 for iPhone, then they could pay $2.75 for the fare.
Thank you. Fernanda Espinoza, followed by Assemblyman Robert Carroll.
Oh, General Leaver's here now.
Hi, my name is Fernanda Espinoza. I am a high school student. Growing up, I never paid attention to the MTA and what they did. Money wasn't a worry to me because I didn't have to pay the fare. A memory that I remember and still experiences how dirty and filthy the buses, trains, and stations are. Since I've been alive, which is not that long, the fare has been raised four times, each time by 25 more cents. As I started having more knowledge over the years, I noticed how the raise was affecting not only my mom as a single parent, but also everybody struggling with money. You say that the fare increase will improve the service, but watch nothing change and in a couple of years, years, you'll be asking for more money. You guys probably don't care about what a sixteen-year-old has to say or any young person, and you aren't worried about what the people have to say because regardless of the hearing, you'll still raise prices. And all of you will never understand the struggle that we go through as seniors and homeowners on the MTA buses and trains. Some people lose their jobs and students lose class time because of the delays, but we don't get that time back. I doubt that you use the MTA service yourselves because these issues would have been already resolved a long time ago. Start with the train service signals and elevator access for disabled people. Get your stuff together and show us that you're gonna use our money to better the crappy service that we get.
Assemblyman Robert Carroll, followed by Joel Northam.
Good evening. And first, I'd like to thank the Board for coming out tonight to hear strap hangers, complaints, and concerns. I would like to urge all of you to not approve the fare increase in the next year. And you, and I know that it is imperative for the operating budget of the MTA to be fully funded, but you can do it another way. And the way in which you can do that is by engaging the state legislature. The state legislature has the means to produce direct revenue sources for both the MTA capital budget and the MTA operating budget. The state legislature must pass a comprehensive congestion pricing plan along with other direct revenue streams that can come from a multitude of tax sources, including a corporate alternative minimum tax, a increase in a millionaire's income tax, a tax on marijuana, a tax on sports betting. A multitude of resources can be used to direct money to both the capital budget and the operating budget. A current fare increase, which you all know would produce about $30 million a month, about $360 million in a year, can easily be found in other resources. It is also necessary that when we create a congestion pricing scheme to de-incentivize people from driving into the central business district or using cabs, we must further incentivize the use of mass transit, and that is best done by keeping the fare as low as humanly possible. I don't own a car. I have a monthly MetroCard ticket because I'm wealthy enough to be able to purchase a card every single month. There are so many New Yorkers who do not have that ability. Please, do not raise the fare. Engage the state legislature. I've talked to many of you on this board. I have been asking you for the last year and a half. Engage the state legislature. We are your friends. We need to make sure that we find direct revenue streams for the MTA for both its capital and its operating budget. We do not want to end up in a place like New Jersey Transit, which is robbed from its capital budget to pay its operating budget. I know that is serious. Please, please, engage with the Assembly, engage with the State Senate. Let's pass congestion pricing for both a capital and an operating budget, and let's find other revenue streams in this very wealthy city and wealthy state. It is the thing we need to do to save the MTA, and it's the thing we need to do to make our streets livable, to make our air more breathable. Thank you so much. Thank you for coming out to Brooklyn.
Thank you. Joel Northam, followed by Valerie Joseph. I'd also like to note that we've been joined by MTA Board Member David Jones and MTA Chief Development Officer, General Leaver.
My name's Joel. I'm just a concerned citizen living in New York City. I'm going to speak verbally against this fare increase that y'all are doing, but before I get into that, I would just like to address the comment made earlier that was essentially blaming fare beaters for... that's one of the reasons why they have to raise the fares because of fare beaters. So according to the MTA's own statistics, fare beating costs, this is their own statistics by the way, this isn't like actual statistics, it's their figures, which we all know are probably biased, $215 million. So I think the discretionary, or the capital budget and the operating budget was what, $17 billion or something? $17 billion? So I just want to give some perspective really briefly on the difference between a million and a billion. So a million seconds is twelve days, and a billion seconds is 31.7 years. $215 is a drop in the bucket and basically blaming poor people for the rise in fares is criminalizing the poor even further, and I'm not gonna sit by while you show wherever you are. I'm gonna do that. That's just not gonna happen while I'm here, alright? So, other thing I want to say is, yeah, okay, $17 billion, y'all are blaming all these budgetary woes and all this stuff. Do you know that the city actually just approved... Amazon gave $1.6 billion in tax incentives to Amazon, and y'all are gonna sit here and tell us that you're gonna squeeze working class and poor people even further while y'all are giving tax breaks to Amazon? Like, it's absolutely mind-blowing. So, I'm going to counter this proposal with the proposal of my own, alright? We're gonna change to the MTA as funded with new, with the new tax on, and hear me out on this, Wall Street and big corporations, friends of yours, y'all are gonna pay for it. The second thing that we're gonna do is, all y'all are gonna go, we're gonna make the MTA Board Management directly elected instead of selected and handpicked by people with all these special interests involved. Make public transportation really actually public instead of, you know, owned and operated by the 1%. And then we're gonna end all the arrests and tickets on fare beating. You talk about how fare beating is a problem, but maybe people wouldn't try and top the turnstile if it wasn't so expensive to begin with. Maybe $2.75 is already enough as is, and you're talking about raising the fare even more. Do you think fare beating is gonna stop because of raising the rates?
Sir, you can please conclude your remarks. You can always submit written comments. Thank you. Valerie Joseph, followed by Gil Feliciano.
Oh God, Valerie Joseph, she's bald.
Good afternoon. My name is Valerie Joseph, Accessoride Advocate for Brooklyn Center for the Independence of the Disabled. I'm here to testify against the increase in the base fare. This would hit people who use Accessoride and other poor New Yorkers hard, and it would hit us even harder than it would hit other transit riders. Simply put, the MTA is about to balance its budget on the backs of those who can least afford it. As the Daily News wrote in an editorial on Sunday, opposing an increase to a $3 base fare, the $2.75 base fare should remain flat. Otherwise, the poor Accessoride riders and users will suffer a 9.1% hike increase. An Accessoride increase will cause a real hardship for people with disabilities who are disproportionately poor. Thirty-five percent of people with disabilities are living below the federal poverty level, and 58% of those individuals with disabilities in New York are substantially at below 200% of the federal poverty level or below. Beyond that, only 29% of people with disabilities are employed in New York City. Coming up with this extra cash for their riders will be a struggle, and for me, it'll be a very big struggle. I can tell you that people I work with definitely will have trouble coming up with the extra quarter. It may not sound like much, but it is. People with disabilities should pay only their fair share, and this fare hike will impose a disproportionate burden on them. In 2017, the Board rejected an increase in the base fare. Our groups urge you again to stand up for people with disabilities again and withdraw this unfair increase. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Gil Feliciano, followed by Christopher Greif.
Hi, hi, can you hear me? So I just want to say that having an MTA and a public transportation system 24 hours is amazing. It's one of the things that makes our city incredible. Yeah, and the other thing I wanted to say is that, you know, I live off the L line, I, you know, I live off Bedford. I'm really worried about taking the M with as many P boards and that train platform as possible. I'm afraid for my safety. I'm worried about people in the outer boroughs who, over at East New York and Canarsie, who are still have to work in Manhattan and still need to take the, some trains if they can't take the L. I'm worried about people with disabilities. I'm worried about women who have to pay more money because they have to avoid taking the trains because of so much harassment on the trains. But the thing I really wanted to talk about is, I work for the Educational Video Center. We're a nonprofit documentary group, and some of my students are here. We've actually interviewed David Jones in the 80s for documentaries. We still show that interview to our classes, and I really thought that this would be a really awesome opportunity to have a dialogue with the Board, and it's kind of frustrating that we can't have you guys answer questions that we ask. I, you know, I think it's amazing to hear from the public, but I really want to hear from you guys. I'm looking forward to talk to your staff about the alternatives to the L train, but I really want an opportunity to have a back and forth and have you guys kind of answer some of the questions the public has. And hopefully in the next hearings in the future, you guys can answer that. Thanks.
Thank you. Christopher Greif, followed by Deborah Greif.
Good evening. I'm Christopher D. Greif, member of the New York City Transit Riders Council, also member of the ADA Compliance and People with Disabilities and Seniors. I'm here today to say the fare hike is not fair to the customers here because we have low-income families who are Social Security, disability, Medicaid, and food stamps. It is very difficult for them to afford this because it is very hard for them to go from A to B or C to D. We are really asking you to please try to work on the low-income families and people with disabilities. Also, to please support the Fast Forward Program because this will help also to get more accessibility in the borough of Brooklyn, more elevators, more accessible buses that do work very well with the ramps, as well as the more of the Accessoride vehicles that needs to be with the ramp. There are some lifts on the Accessorides are getting older and older and they're breaking down. Please, guys, it's getting to be, after a while, we need to work on the accessibility issues that families cannot afford. There are families who are in NYCHA houses cannot afford this, and I hope the press is listening to this because, you know, fare invasion is really hurting us as well. Yes, we understand someone cannot afford it or the machine doesn't work, but we're asking is that, we hope that NYPD and any other ideas comes up, that we can please stop this fare invasion because it is not fair that we're suffering, but they are not dealing with this justice for all. We are asking that to please speak with all, we asking for the fare state in a certain level for these half-fare customers, for the people with disabilities and seniors. And please support the fare, I mean, the Fast Forward Program. Thank you.
Thank you. Deborah Greif, followed by Anthony Drummond.
Hi, my name is Deborah Greif. I am the Chairperson of the Brooklyn Families Port Service Advisory Council. I represent families who have children with developmental disabilities. Our families are very, most of them are in poverty because we live on SSI. Very few of us live on SSDI, which has a little bit more of an income, but still not enough. Our families who have to use Accessoride, $3 is a lot, $2.75 is a lot, especially when Accessoride still strands you. And yes, it did happen to us because my poor cousin, she, we were somewhere in Howard Beach, and instead of going to the right address, the Accessoride went to the wrong address. Thank God we knew how to call, but we had to wait more than a half an hour in the freezing cold just to get, wait for, and hope that the green taxi finally came so we could go home. I didn't want to go almost at midnight home on the trains because we know they were doing repair work. And then we'd have to take a shuttle to a train to another bus, so we tried. But I would like you to also fix the system. I do in favor of the fast track. I want more accessible stations. But I also want not just the state government to help us, I want the city government. You know, the city council and especially the mayor has not paid his fair share to the MTA. And we should be going after Mayor Flavio, who has taken money away when the Culver Line, the F part in Brooklyn, we lost our elevators because he had to do a study on whether the four train could go down to King's Plaza. That was a ridiculous study because there's a water plane under. So please, make sure that you don't do unnecessary studies. And we all have to advocate to get the money, not just from the state, but from the city. And think of other ways so we can, maybe have the big businesses like Amazon support building all the elevators in other parts of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anthony Drummond, representing Brooklyn Borough President Eric Adams, followed by Elliot Rosborough.
Good evening, MTA Board members. My name is Anthony Drummond. I'm representing Borough President Eric Adams. So I'll read a brief shortened version of the testimony that the Borough President is submitting to you all. Alright, my name is Eric L. Adams. I am Brooklyn Borough President, representing two point six million residents who ride and depend upon New York City Transit System to get them to school, work, and various locations throughout our city every day. I am submitting testimony opposing the Metropolitan Transportation Authority's proposed fare toll hikes. This hike will range from a single ride of one percent to the thirty, to the thirty, to the thirty-day pass of five percent respectively, and would impact daily, weekly, and monthly pass riders who depend on the system. For, this is the sixth time in eight years that the MTA is asking commuters who live in the most unaffordable city in America to dig deeply in their pockets and pay more to ride the buses than the trains. This particular fare and toll increase is especially egregious because MTA New York City Transit is not only calling for a fare and toll increase, but also for service cuts to buses and subways. This is a slap in the face to New Yorkers who traverse the system on a daily basis and depend on reliable service for their livelihoods. I'm going to skip down a bit here. Earlier this year, MTA New York City Transit President Andy Byford submitted his Fast Forward Blueprint that outlines a ten-year plan to modernize the system. I fully support this plan and I call on elected officials from the city and state to get behind this plan. In addition, it is time that we explore all options when it comes to the financial status of the largest transportation authority in North America. The proposals of congestion pricing and a millionaire's tax are plans most discussed. But we should also look at other proposals such as a potential bond measure that will support dedicated funding towards our transit infrastructure. Our buses and trains are the economic lifeblood of our city. For more than a century, this system has provided billions of commuters with a way to get to work, school, home, and various recreational activities across the city. It is imperative that we become creative and find innovative, long-term, sustainable funding measures that are transit and toll and fare policy. For, all options must be considered, such as increasing the payroll mobility tax, exploring value capture and congestion pricing. We must stop asking commuters to pay more into the system that is becoming unaffordable and right now unreliable. This is not rocket science. The time for action is now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Elliot Rosborough, followed by Pedro Valdez Rivera.
Good evening. My name is Elliot Rosborough. I'm a volunteer leader of the New York City for Change. My and other organizations are looking at congestion pricing and other means to counter the need for a, a fare hike. This tactic may, um, may be useful to get us through now. But without solving the root cause of this shortfall, such as corruption, theft, mismanagement, and the lack of a meaningful revenue stream, we are not going to solve the problem and we'll be back here every two to five years. And that doesn't make any sense. Governor Cuomo has raided the MTA budget a number of times in his eight years. And last year asked New York City to replace four hundred million dollars of, um, at least four hundred and thirty million that he raided from the MTA. And why should New Yorkers have to pay for money that he used for something else? He created the shortfall. Why should we have to replace it? And he's done this with a number of other utilities throughout, throughout the state as well. Anyway, um, we, if we ask the wealthy in, in the city to pay equal taxes that we pay, we would have nine times as much money. We could take care of the MTA, our school, educational system, having teachers and smaller class sizes, et cetera, et cetera. If we only did half of that, that would increase our revenue by four and a half times. So I have a major problem saying that we would rather rebuild the MTA on the backs of poor people rather than have wealthy people pay just a portion of what they owe in taxes. So I personally don't, don't particularly care for adjusted pricing, but I see it as a fair way to get us through at this time. It, it weighs fairly on the populace. But to not have the wealthy pay their fair share doesn't make sense. And to not stop the governor from raiding the MTA and other things makes no sense whatsoever. Thank you.
Pedro Valdez Rivera, followed by Lucia Canton.
Good evening. My name is Pedro Valdez Rivera Junior. And I'm a represent, rep, I'm a resident from Bedford Thompson International Building. I'm a member of the Rise and Rise, which is a grassroots organization dedicated to fight for affordable fares and improve service citywide. I'm here to not support the, the fare toll increases and here's why. It will affect my bar line as well as my family's bar line in the overall budget. For example, four of my siblings are working minimum wage jobs. They each rely on an unlimited MetroCard to get to, to work at home and back. If the fares are going to go up, it will, it will have a major burden and they have to decide whether or not if they're going to pay more money for the, our MetroCard or buy for iron necessities such as food, rent, medicine, pay credit card bills, et cetera. For my story is, I took the B thirty-eight bus, um, um, once a week from my house to a doctor's appointment. And it's very congested on the B thirty-eight. So how it can be solved? With congestion pricing. As for me, the member of the Rise Rise and as a concerned constituent of New York City, I want Governor Cuomo and the state legislature in Albany to find dedicated sources of revenue stream funding to fully fund not just the MTA's fast-forward plan that Andy Byford has envisioned, but also the MTA's operating budget. I count on you, my family's count on you, and the whole city and states count on you to make it this possible. Thank you so much.
Lucia Canton, followed by John Tufel.
John what? Tufel? Tufel, yes. Oh God.
John Tufel. Omar Vera.
Excuse me?
Go ahead, mister.
Followed by Azar Alvarez.
There goes Omar Vera now.
Good evening, MTA. Welcome to one, welcome to one of the great meetings, public hearings regarding fare and toll changes that, that you schedule for every two years, which I, I believe that's excessive and that's unsustainable because my, my opinion, they should be held on, only every five or ten years. One, even like, maybe six years. We can agree on six years, can we? Yes. Also, um, since the new government in Albany is coming in January, it's time to ally yourselves with, with some of the new incoming members. I mentioned this, um, at the finance, the special finance committee meeting last Monday. You remember that President Byford? I, I saw you nod. Yep, I can see through everyone. Ha ha. But anyway, um, but anyway, um, I especially urge you to, all of you to ally yourselves with, um, um, with incoming State Senator Robert Jackson. He ever since my district, State Senate District Thirty-One, which covers upper Manhattan and the Upper West Side. And, um, trust me, if you get, if you work with him, he'll get things done. He and the, um, he and most of the fellow newcomers already took down the counterproductive IDC that have been blocking, that have been blocking progress in Albany for several years. But now that we have unified, unified democratic control of the state government, it's time to push this forward. It's time to get behind Fast Forward. We need Fast Forward. And I believe that would, that would, all that would do well to avert any changes in the fares. Now frankly, my opinion, I know this is a little bit of a long shot, but, um, you should try to lower the fare back to two dollars. But, I mean, we can, that's all for debate, even though that's, that should be, that should be the right thing to do. One fifty, even better, but still, even two dollars, we can agree. But still, no more fare hikes for now, no more. Just get more funding, get more funding. Preferably, get it from, um, former Mayor Giuliani and former Governor Pataki because they robbed the MTA blind in the nineties. And that's why, and that's why there are so many delays here, um, last year. Make them pay every last cent. Make them pay like, I don't know, a million dollars for every year. They caused chaos. Thank you.
Thank you. Azar Alvarez, followed by Alex Gershman.
Okay, uh, I, I understand that the MTA is in a huge deficit, roughly estimated to be in the hundreds of millions of dollars, and is in need of money. Asking for a fare hike at this point is absolutely unacceptable when all of us pay hundreds of dollars on MetroCards. Firstly, how can the MTA ask us to pay more for a service that continuously deteriorates? Delays, suspensions. We can't tell our, our employers and our college professors that we're late because of train traffic ahead of us. They don't buy it. We have to keep adjusting their schedules for, to factor in train and bus delays. In other words, two hours for a forty-five, forty-five minute bus or subway, bus or subway ride. This is unacceptable. The MTA continues to shrug off any and all of our complaints. There is absolutely no evidence that any of the upgrades that have been made have actually made a difference. One example is the track work that was done on the Q line a few weeks ago between Atlantic Avenue and Crossway Park. It took, it, it was originally supposed to be two weeks, but two weeks turned into three and then it became two months. Seriously, two months to repair a segment of track that was barely three kilometers? How does this even, how does this work? And on top of that, it wouldn't, it wouldn't even be that bad if the stations were actually upgraded. But they weren't. They look exactly the same. And on top of that, every single day that I see the track work being done, I see ten to fifteen people just standing there and maybe one guy actually working. Everybody else is just on their phones. This is where all of our money is going? The MTA really needs to evaluate where they're spending their money. And on top of that, the MTA apparently bailed out a ski resort, according to the New York Times. Are you serious? Where was our bailout? Now, lastly, if the MTA needs help on, um,
Oh yeah, that article.
If the MTA needs help on how to finance all their projects, Jeff Bezos moved in, so why don't we ask him for a small amount of a million dollars every two years? Thank you.
Yeah, unfortunately.
Alex Gershman, representing Councilman Deitch.
Yeah.
Followed by George Remy.
Before I begin, Councilman Deitch asked me to pass along a special thank you to President Byford. So a special hello. Um, good evening and thank you for allowing me to testify here today. My name is Alex Gershman. I'm speaking on behalf of Councilman Chaim Deitch from the Forty-Eighth City Council District. I'm here today to speak on behalf of my constituents in opposition to the proposed fare increase by the MTA. I represent the district of senior citizens and working-class Americans. I meet constituents every day from both of these groups who are struggling to get by. They reached out to my office via email, phone call, and letter about this proposed fare increase. They've spoken to me loud and clear. They cannot afford another fare increase. My district has more senior citizens than any other district in the city of New York. Every day, my office gets calls from many seniors who rent alone, uh, whose rent alone essentially matches what they get from Social Security or SSI. They have no extra income. They call my office asking for assistance in any way possible, just so they can afford basic necessities. While we help these folks apply for the reduced fare MetroCards, for many of them, it's a struggle even to afford that. Fares must be at a level so that these seniors can afford to get to their medical appointments. We should respect the elderly and allow them to live with dignity. Senior citizens cannot afford an MTA fare increase. I also hear from working-class constituents on a routine basis about how the city is increasingly unaffordable. Property taxes and rents are skyrocketing. The price of food is going up and their incomes aren't keeping up with the increases in the cost of living. Many constituents have told me about how they have to share MetroCards, waiting by the gate until they're able to swipe their unlimited cards again. It's an unfortunate reality that many of my constituents and those throughout the entire city are forced to live with. Their trips on the subway are so they can get to and from work. Transportation is a necessity for them to be able to support their families. Working-class New Yorkers cannot afford an MTA fare increase. All of us here want to make New York as great a city as possible, but that can't happen if ordinary folks cannot afford to live here. I urge you to listen to the voices of the people, to hear what they are saying. New Yorkers cannot afford an MTA fare increase. Please do not let this fare increase, this blow to ordinary New Yorkers, go through. Thank you.
George Remy.
Oh God.
Followed by Patrick Johnson.
Good evening, everyone. My name is George Remy and I'm from ABC. The MTA spent more than four point five billion dollars on the first phase on the second, of the Second Ave Avenue subway. Why did we need a new station in the Upper State East Side when the station's in Brooklyn or in bad shape? Or does it help the MTA move forward? And part of the MTA's plan to repair the L line is to put in a fancy upgrade like touchscreen and LCD screen at the Bedford Avenue Station? These unnecessary upgrades are making the shut, shutdown longer. And also,
He's really on the touch.
I want to mention that I hope with all the note that you took down, you made a change in the plan that you prepared for, for the phase forward because that's what we hear. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick Johnson, followed by Angus McCollum.
Hello, my name is Patrick Johnson. I am a school teacher here in Brooklyn. When I teach my students about the circulatory system, the heart, the veins, the blood that's all pumping through our bodies, I explain to them it's like the MTA system. Things are being moved around. You are the little red blood cell being moved around the city by the trains. Following that metaphor, what we're doing right now is a heart attack to the city's ability to function. We're being told that there's not money available when somehow in twenty sixteen, we can provide five million dollars from the MTA's bank account to renovate three upstate ski resorts. We're being told that there's not enough money and yet the city and state government is providing three billion dollars for Jeff Bozos, who's literally the richest man in the world to come and build Amazon here to also displace our communities of color.
Yeah, they're putting my boss under the bus.
When the capital gains tax in the state is capped at twenty percent, when my cap is twenty-five percent as a school teacher, why do I have a higher tax rate than the billionaires on Wall Street? We're being told there's not enough money when in fact there is enough money. It takes tax renovation, it takes tax reform, but more importantly, it takes courage. Please have courage for us. We are the people fighting for the city. We make up the city. The people on Wall Street and all those big fat cats up in Albany, they are not the people. We are the people. We are the blood of this city, so please allow it to keep pumping.
Angus McCollum, followed by Mary Kessinger.
Okay, hello, everyone. I just want to say that I'm strongly in opposition for this plan. I, I don't, honestly, I'm, I didn't prepare a speech. I'm just saying that, you know, on behalf of fellow New Yorkers that, you know, it's got, it's gotten to a point where it's too much. And I know that you probably hear this all the time, but, you know, we've all seen people who can't afford these fares and, it's just not a sustainable, um, resource to keep raising the fare twenty-five cents every two years, you know? If you were to raise the fare every two- If you were to raise the fare every two years, like, you would get twenty dollars in some long amount of time, you know? And then this is going to deter jobs from New York City and from this regional area, and it's, you can get a sustainable source of funding by using congestion pricing and other sources of funding. Um, and I guess my point is that this is not a sustainable funding source, and taxing people who can't afford it is not fair to us New Yorkers who use it every day. And I think I've been, I'm just a middle school student, and I've been, I'm, I go, use the train every morning, and this morning, I was stuck on the R train for thirty minutes, and I have to wake up an hour and a half to get to school, um, for fourteen blocks. So I just feel like it's really hurting New Yorkers, um, and something needs to be done to create a sustainable source of funding for the MTA instead of raising the fares. Thank you.
Mary Kessinger. Ms. Kessinger?
Yes, I'm here. I'm here today with the People's MTA to oppose this fare hike, which is not a fair hike. The problem is that you're raising, you want to raise the fare when the service has deteriorated to the point that able-bodied people suffer the same problems with the subway that disabled people have. The elevators are broken, it's, the um, trains are delayed, change, schedule changes are frequent, um, the change, um, cars just don't run, you know, and they're not, they um, anyway, it's just not working. And what you've done is like, people that ought to be able to get around on the subway are not able to because of these factors of the changes and the uh, equipment, you know, the repairs that are being done and the way, the weekends, it's just impossible. Like, complete lines are just completely out, and you can't, you just can't get around the city. And we oppose the, the fare increase because we believe that there, there is the money available. When you want the money, you're able to find it. When you wanted to buy Grand Central Station, you found the money. When the state legislature wanted to raise, they found the money. They all got a raise this year for the first time in a long time. And they, they managed to find the money. The money is there. And also, it's just outrageous that the richest man, the absolute richest man in the world gets a tax break because they, they want him to, to be here to operate in New York City, because I guess it makes the city look good. Meantime, the subway system is here to get working people to work and home again, and instead of that,
oh, God.
It's, it's just, it's just, you're just not looking at what, what's necessary. We need,
Ma'am, if you could please summarize your remarks.
Okay, I just think that it's important that the bosses that rely on, on their workers to get to work, that they pay the subway fees, and also, we feel that you should look at the um,
Ma'am, if you could please include your, thank you. Aya Oasis, followed by Natalie Rose.
Hi. Um, that's not how my name is pronounced, but it's okay.
I follow that.
Um, okay. So I just want to address a few points about the budget and how it's being spent. Um, I think a lot of people are focusing on increasing the budget, but I think the, another issue is mismanagement of the budget. Um, first of all, um, there, you guys are funding like outrageous capital improvements instead of actually um, actually making sure that service is running. Uh, for example, the Fulton uh, Street Station in Manhattan, which was like millions and millions and millions of dollars, and the budget kept increasing to almost one billion or more, I don't remember. Um, second of all, most of the budget, I mean, a huge part of the budget is going to Wall Street in um, in a lot of interest that they're making profit out of. So instead of just taxing Wall Street and taking that money back, you're charging us to pay for your debt that you created for yourself. And the, the ridership of the MTA has doubled in the past twenty years, which means that money from the fares is, was never gonna help you. Like, you guys are getting more and more into debt when there's more and more riders. And if anything, there's companies like Lyft and Uber that are making a lot of money and taking a lot of ridership from the MTA that the city and state can't tax to actually give money to fund actual public transit. Um, so first of all, the budget needs to be more open. I know that you guys publish, you know, the ways that you use your budget, but the people need to have a say. Like, the people would never, ever, ever have told you, oh, we want to use like half of our money to build an amazing mall, station, like billion-dollar station in Wall Street. Like, none of us care. None of us go there. We just pass through because we have to like switch from the A train to the four, five, six. That's it. Um, I live off the G train, and there are no shuttle buses when it's, when it's shut down. You guys lie about that. There's no shuttle buses. There's no accessibility, and you guys are charging us for your own problems. So I would say that um, public transit should be truly free. We should elect the board. You guys should not be this unaccountable appointed board that mismanages funds. And you should tax corporations, Amazon, and the state and city need to stop funding the NYPD to arrest ninety-two percent of people are black for fare beating. And take that money and figure it into the class transit that we actually deserve.
Ma'am, if you could include your remarks.
Alice, Alice, you're being harsh. Alice!
Followed by Teresa, Teresa Watson.
Hi, good evening. Uh, my name is Natalie Rose, and I'm a Brooklyn resident. And I use the MTA. I've been using it to go to school and doctor's appointments ever since I was about eight, eight or nine years old. So I appreciate the renovations that you've done with the subway stations on the Three Line, particularly from Sutter, Brooklyn Road to New Los Avenue. But at the same time, when we go in the morning to either pay for our ride, the machines are down. Um, all three of them, particularly at my station, Sutter Avenue, Rotten Road. So then that means there's a long line at the uh, token booth clerk. And so then this causes delay for riders, because now they're missing trains, because there's only one person in the token booth uh, taking, trying, making trouble with the machines. But if the machines are not working, they're not accepting bills, they're not accepting credit cards, debit cards. What is the point? Really. Um, I'm appreciative of the upgrades, but then if the upgrades are not beneficial, then we're still in the same boat. And it's not being effective. I am against the fare increase because of these small things that you may see, but there are impact where the, or jump the fare that I don't do, but the thing is that what other choice?
Your remarks.
I will. If you can,
Black people in this city and I have to walk in there, everyone who goes to work and work with the people we don't care about? And I have to see those cops there, that's ridiculous. The subway should be free, poverty is not a freaking crime. And so you all need to change that system. I feel like NYC runs on the backs of poor and working-class people and they need to be the people we think about and we care first.
Thank you, Gabriel Santos. Followed by Johnny May Robinson.
My name is Haiti Delos Santos. I disagree with you raising the fare hikes for the people because many of us are disabled. I don't look disabled, but I am. And it is not fair for us to have to pay more than we are supposed to because you are always cutting service, taking things away from us. And then you want us to pay when it is very difficult for some of us that either don't have jobs or are looking for jobs all the time. Why don't you, like many people have said, try and get the money you need from Amazon federally, locally, or even from Cuomo? Many of us need the service to get around.
Okay.
And also, getting service need with the transportation, that is very difficult. But for me being disabled, I would love to be working for transit. And I love to help people that need the help in the transportation. Sometimes some of us helping other people do better service than you do. And you should try to help us and not raise the fare because a lot of people, as I said, cannot handle it the way you want to raise it against us. So why don't you talk about it and try and think of us, the disabled, and the people that are here
Thank you, ma'am, for your hearts.
telling you that you should not do that.
Thank you. Johnny May Robinson. Followed by Kathy Park Price.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, thank you for your time. I concur with everything that everybody has said when it comes to the budget. But what I want to talk about is the personal effect that the train has on people. First of all, the trains are outdated. And I've been riding the train technically since the seats were weaker and they had leather strap hangers. And you would get a splinter on your bottom if you didn't ride it well. But now, there's no rooms on the train, like there's no room on the train. I'm an avid train rider because my job is outreach job, so I ride the A, B, C, D, E, F, G, the J, L, M, Q, R, S, the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 7, and they all are the same. They're the worst. So, for safety issues, I think about, you already need $22 to get on the train, just to get on the train. And I don't want anybody to jump the train. But I do say this, so as I sit on the C train local, which is the train that I get to work every day, and I take it to 11 stops and it's late half the time because it runs express and I miss my stop if I'm not listening. So there are 100 seats on your train. Approximately 500 to 600 people can fit on one car. You have 10 cars per station. That's about 500 that ride maybe comfortably or crowded per stop. So I'm saying, all this to say is that, as many of us ride the train, as many of us go to work on a daily basis and go kind of change, and it shouldn't be a fare hike. And I don't know if everybody remembers the incentive where we could ride free. I think that was on a Saturday and Sunday like that. Maybe we can bring back some incentives, then let's ride the train free for the weekend.
Thank you. Kathy Park Price. Followed by Anthony Fodi.
Good evening, MTA board members. And hello, Mr. Byford. We met you at the Park Slope Town Hall and you signed a copy of your Fast Forward Plan for my son, my seven-year-old son Grayson. We believe in this. He cuddles with this at night, you know? And we believe in this, we believe in you. We don't believe in this proposal. Hi, my name is Kathy Park Price and I'm a Brooklyn mom. I'm here with my children, who are five and seven years old. As a family, we oppose any proposed fare hike that isn't paired with congestion pricing, which would represent fair and sustainable funding to actually fix the subway. We feel strongly that families need to be represented in this public forum since families, especially low-income families, are disproportionately affected by the proposed fare hike. Books and candy. But all kidding aside, as you know, after kids reach a certain height, they need to pay for full fare Metro cards outside of the one trip back and forth to and from school, depending on eligibility. So a family of four could pay $508 per month for four unlimited Metro cards based on the fare hike proposal. Without congestion pricing, that's when having a car in the city starts to make more sense than using public transportation, which leads to further decline in ridership. If you, the MTA board members, vote to increase prices that would take effect in March 2019, it will mark the MTA's sixth fare and toll increase since 2009. Give us the plan, not a scam. We're asking you and elected officials to do your jobs before asking millions of New Yorkers to pay a penny more. Because we hope you'll remember us, our message, we came bearing gifts. My kids made ornaments out of Metro cards for the MTA board members. And they have a message on the back, "No fare hike."
Hi, I'm Anthony J. Fodi. I'm a Brooklyn resident, HRA employee, former state senate employee, and a graduate from Pace University with a polyside degree. Here's the deal, I want to really thank you for this freedom of speech and I don't apologize for anything I say, nor should anyone else. But the deal is, if you have a product on the shelf and you're not making enough money and you're not selling enough of them, you don't raise the price on the product, you go back and you figure out how to make it cheaper. And let me tell you, I see it every day. The unlimited Metro card is a joke. It should be reprogrammed, you should never be able to swipe it twice at the same station. Never. You go through, you make a delivery, a station down, you go back in again. You do not pass it through the bars and like the 6 o'clock, 6:20, 6:40, 7 o'clock, 7:20, 7:40, 8 o'clock. Everybody gets to work, one unlimited Metro card and a whole family? I pay every single time. When I bought that token, I put the token in each time. Forget about these Pittance 20 cents discounts for buying a week, etc. Charge me $2.75 each, but get everyone else. Everyone pays. The people who jump the turnstile are not poor, they're criminals. I've seen them park their brand-new car right on the corner. They swipe, they open the gate, they let other people in. You guys are letting all that income go by of criminals and diligent people are paying and paying and paying. The thing is, you show me in this proposal that you're collecting from everyone who's getting over on the God-fearing, good citizen who pays every single time. If you collect from them, what about a nice ticket blitz? Oh, not in my neighborhood. Let me tell you, you play your phone without the headphones, ticket. You blow your nose, you throw it on the floor, ticket. Oh, not us. You know what? The God-fearing, obeying the law people who blow their nose and throw it out in the receptacle do not go home with a $250 ticket. But you will make money on, and quality of life issue? Oh, they're nothing. They are. Berkowitz started with a dog that wouldn't stop barking. Every time the cops talk to two neighbors who argue, they go home. A week later, they're like, "Hey!" Anyway, like I said, I...
Round it up. Campsio Guillermo. Followed by Shakira Elhout. Mr. Guillermo? Ms. Guillermo?
I'm coming.
Mr. Guillermo, followed by Shakira Elhout.
Good afternoon. My name is Guillermo Campsio and I live in Park Slope. And I took time out of my day to come here to say that although I agree with a lot of people here, I understand that a fare hike is necessary. However, I feel it is important for the MTA board to stand up to your boss, Andrew Cuomo, and to stand up to his supporters, like the Transportation Workers Union Local 100 and their spies that are here, and ensure that our labor costs are in control. We should not be spending the amount of money that we're spending on labor costs because guess what? I don't get unlimited health care from my employer. Why should MTA employees receive unlimited health care for free on the backs of working New Yorkers like myself? Mr. Byford, I agree with your plan. Thank you very much for your vision and your leadership. I really hope that the rest of the board will stand up to the vested interests in New York and interfere with your vision, realizing your vision. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Shakira Elhout.
Hi, my name is Shakira Elhout. I'm a civil engineer, I live in Brooklyn. So I want to start by saying that I have the utmost respect for the MTA. I take the train every day to work and home. A lot of people do, everybody does. We don't have any other options. I've devoted my entire life to, you know, to the good, to transportation. I worked for the United States Department of Transportation, Florida Nation, and New York City Transit. You walk around to Broadway and you see about 60% of people doing work. The other 40% are waiting to retire. Where is that money? That being said, again, I do respect the MTA, I love the MTA. That being said, I know efficiency, I know things cost money. I know a lot of politics are at all between the government, you know, the governor, the state, and the city. We need to find a way to figure out where this money's going to come from. Straight from Governor Cuomo's website, he promised record MTA capital plan to bring New York City's subways into the infrastructure. The MTA is very old, we run 365, you know, 24 hours a day, and that's amazing, the train every day. And we are seeing it get worse and worse and worse. And why should we have to pay for this? Why should we have to pay when it's going down, it's getting worse? Anyway, I propose keeping the fares the same, vast improvements need to be made. And the majority of the public has no other choice but to tolerate it. We don't have any other options. We have to take the train to work. So please don't raise the fare hikes, find another way to pay for it. Thank you.
Thank you. George Kaufer. Followed by Bruce Pepperman. Mr. Kaufer?
Good evening, everybody. I'm George Kaufer, I live in Staten Island. The, one of the issues that's coming up with the fare hike is the three-legged transfers. You know, they give us the excuse like, oh, that requires approval for the internet to allow refunds in case of an error. And the also thing is something new to the express system, since it's not going to accept cash. I mean, what happens if you dip in, let's see, we don't really get how that's going to work. That should be interesting to think. The other thing is, just the information that's been given. I keep asking about, can we have information about your thought process behind everything you do? And then I get a, you know, a guy shows up to the Staten Island hearing with calculations and everything and he's like, oh, I'll show them to you. And then he emails me, sorry, they're for internal use only. I mean, I don't get how you can get to the root of the problems if you don't show us what the calculations are. And I just saw the draft schedules for the January pick. I'm not really impressed and everything. You guys, I'm going to write a blog, what exact issues are that need to be resolved. But again, this comes down to you didn't show your thought process and everything and everything has to be a secret for no reason. I mean, some of these things people are asking, you know, is the, do you have the statistics? If you have them, show them. If you don't have them, whatever, then, you know, you need to have them. Because otherwise, people are going to say, put everything back, put everything back. And you're going to put back the bad stuff too. I mean, it doesn't make any sense.
Bruce Pepperman?
Manhattan on the 6th Avenue. Sales are indicate, the church avenue station, I know it's not default, yet it looks, I looked at it, I went, this is terrible. It looks terrible. It looks horrible. Another thing that really bothers me, and I know you're probably not going to care about this, I probably should have pursued the transit police 30 years ago, I'm too old now. But every time I'm waiting for a train and I stand by the turnstile, I notice at least 20 people jump the turnstile. I'm not going to tell the transit police how to do the job like another gentleman. I respect his opinion. They should arrest everybody. They can't arrest everybody. It's not feasible. I was on the train once and an undercover officer said, it's too big to work for the city, you can't walk through the cars. So I got a summons. And he was right, I shouldn't be walking through the cars. The train door said to the turnstile. If I could tell you how many people are on a bus with sorry stories, they're really, and the driver shouldn't get in arguing with them. He should, nor should I get in an argument with my points. Every day someone comes on, I'm just supposed to tell you I'm not going to pay for it, do this. And 20, 40 times a day, it's ridiculous. Your desire to gate this, hopefully, really doesn't...
Being who's reaching the cusp? I don't think now is the time to improve. And what would you personally pay for something? We don't have that option. While you keep things, we're really no efficient. These are the places that see the least amount of reliable service and are struggling to make ends meet. This is the places where buses don't come frequently. They have to take to get to a train that may or may not be there now. I don't want to assume any party, all the need magically able to come up with millions of dollars of incentives for Amazon to gentrify Long Island City, but somehow have emptiest pockets for these hot mess trains. It makes zero sense to me. You want to charge more people while you're also removing service. And I don't care what kind of buses and we're going to come up with, it's still going to be trash. How do you expect to meet the demand of the people who are actually displaced and impacted when we can't recover from signal failure or train traffic ahead on a daily basis? That makes no sense. Period, the end. We can't seem to, like, it happens every day. How can we not manage to have some kind of plan to prepare it? And then there was an article about how we dumped all this money into the 7 train, knowing full well that the signals were a hot mess. And there's literally a quote, "Well, this was like our learning experience. We're going to implement new changes when we do the L." That's trash. That's flat-out trash. I shouldn't have to pay for that. These people who have limited access to the service should not have to pay for it. And I'm going to stay for that, but you guys are over budget, underfunded, missing deadlines. Flat-out, just not cool. So I agree with the other woman who said that you guys need to come up with incentives. On some level, you need to buy back rider faith. Give people a free day.
Please conclude your remarks.
They started late, it's fine. At the end of the day, you guys need to come up with something that makes people believe in you again because what you're doing is not working.
Thank you. Mitchell White. Followed by Mary Orr.
Good evening. My name is Mitchell White. Okay, great. My name is Mitchell White. I am a grassroots station dedicated to improving bus and subway service all across New York City. The reason I'm here this evening is I live in Brooklyn. I ride the 2 and the 5 subway, as well as the A and the C, in order to get to work each and every day. I moved to the city three years ago from New Jersey. So this is obviously an improvement over living in New Jersey. But that being said, there's, you know, there's a long way to go. I am, I'm paid on an hourly basis, I'm not a salaried employee. And so each minute, every, you know, half hour, every hour, I have to wait to work. I'm not getting paid for that time, I'm not getting that time back. You know, there's a brief window where I can get maybe 15 minutes of that time back at work when I say the train was delayed. But that doesn't fly every single day, which happens to be how often the subway is delayed. And, you know, to ask for a fare hike at this point, considering how much I'm paying in rent, how much I'm paying in bills, how much I'm paying in student loans, to me is completely unacceptable. There are just so many other means of raising, you know, money for your budget. If it's, you know, through congestion pricing or if it's going to be through a millionaire's tax, however you need to get it done, don't do it on the backs of Rito. I just, you know, I really want to make it clear that this affects me, this affects every person in New York. And I, you know, I just hope that you make the right decision, we'll not raise the fares on this occasion. Thank you.
Mary Orr. Followed by Kevin Penarros.
My name is Mary Orr and I'm here to say that I am against a fare hike also. I agree with these people who's talking about the ones who don't pay their fare. I have a big, big problem with that. Because I pay my fare, I'm a senior sister, I'm handicapped. I'm 83 years old, so you know I'm handicapped. You don't have to be in a wheelchair or have a cane or something to be disabled. I'm disabled. And I get on that bus, when I get on that bus, sometimes I get the first 50 seat that I get to. And the bus driver have a nerve to tell me to get up for somebody who don't pay. I got a problem with that. And I told, and I told the bus driver, I don't get up for nobody who don't pay. I don't care if they're in a wheelchair, they got a crutch or whatever, or they can be carried on a stretcher. I don't get up for them. If they don't pay, they got no business on that bus. And that's a fact. And I've been riding with transit ever since it was $5.06. I remember when there was no buses, there was only trucks. So I know, it was never, it was never this mess back then either. For $5, you got better service, the place was clean and everything, and people wasn't jumping no turnstiles either. Transit is your responsibility to make anybody pay their fare. That is not right to say that you, some can pay and some don't pay. And nothing is done about this. Go right into J Street, it's a joke. It's a joke. If they want to pay, they pay, if they don't want to pay, they go right through the gate. This and Mrs. Subway has nothing about this. Why? Why is that continuing on and on? That's where, if you can roll the fare back to a dollar and let anybody pay, you still come out even. You still come out, this is what you're doing now. Because every time you raise that fare, you get more and more cheaters. So you have to stop it. It's fucking nonsense.
Thank you.
Oh, Bob Faran, that was for you.
Followed by Joseph McNeesh.
Good afternoon. It is the responsibility of the MTA board to help avoid another fare hike from occurring. Us New Yorkers have been dealing with years of frustration because of previous New York City Transit presidents that never seem to put their priorities to help improve the daily commute of every single person who takes the bus and trains. How is it possible that the MTA is going to increase the fares three to four times in the next six years on the subways if they're not improving at all, singles per bus? Every day I see thousands of people that go on Twitter expressing their frustration on the MTA. I hope that this current MTA board realizes that 2019 will be a decisive year because not only there will be a shutdown on the airline, and of course, whether or not if there will be a fare hike, but the Fast Forward Plan is going up for grabs and it needs to get passed. Andy Byford, the England international, who is now the New York City Transit president for the MTA, has proven before that he was able to turn things around when he used to be the face of the London Underground, Toronto Transit, and Rail Corp in Australia. He made positive changes. If he can do that there, he can certainly revive the MTA. The New York City government needs to step it up and not only vote for the Fast Forward Plan to go through, but to provide the necessary funding for this potential life-changing plan to go through. And we need to see the improvements because everyone is tired of hearing promises. Governor Cuomo and Bill de Blasio, the responsibility is in your hands. We need to make a change and make sure that the MTA in five to 10 years is the best transportation in the world because it has the potential. We need to fix the infrastructure on the entire subway system. It's important to have CBTC implemented on all lines and to redesign the bus network for all five boroughs to improve service and of course, to enforce bus lanes, and that is the job of the New York City Department of Transportation. The state government needs to fix the issues with the corruption going on with the MTA because it is un... Not everybody in New York City is rich, six-figure income job. Andy Byford, I have your effort, I praise your effort, and I have faith that you'll turn things around. But we New Yorkers deserve a better MTA. Thank you.
Joseph McNeesh. Followed by Mike Charles.
Pensions are busting the budget. Was a farmer, he took his pension and went to Florida, no income tax, same matching funds, and really cheaper. And 5% matching, what do you write, stocks, bonds, safe bonds, treasuries, whatever. Put it in budget, every time people would have to, MTA wouldn't have to pay for pensions. And he moved to Florida with income tax, no income tax, and they do spend their money in New York City anyway. Also, the power changed, maybe not cops, but big strong men should stand in front of the gates, what she said. Stand in front of the gates, no guns, but in uniform, to prevent people from walking through the gates. $10, $15 an hour, we don't wage, something like that. Also, the special buses after school, before school, just... Just special school bus or the bus pass. They make the crowd there and yells, "Grand to work." Need 10 cars, car service, not that 4 cars. 10 cars.
Centers, where it's at, New York. What's it going to take? I don't know. You know, the people that can't afford it. I guess that makes sense. You know, I have the option of taking the 41, the Q-35, the 2, or the 5 train to get home today from going back to class right now, from campus to Flatbush and Avenue K. Without me taking a elevator instead. Not only because I know I'm going to get home sooner, but it is cheaper. I didn't take the train or the bus to get, you know, to campus today from home either, just kind of why. Thank you.
Thank you. Monica Bartley. Followed by Alan Fents.
Good evening. I'm a community outreach organizer at the Center for Independent Safety in New York. I'm here to oppose the proposed fare increase. The MTA's plan to increase fares yet again shows the difference to making transit accessible for the disabled. This is... Financial difficulties. In investing in fancy new stations, invest in making all subway stations accessible by adding elevators and ramps. Instead of investing in the purchase of Grand Central Station, invest in improving the existing station. The two with disabilities should pay only their fair share. And this fare hike will impose a disproportionate burden on them. We urge you to reject this increase. Thank you.
Alan Fents. Followed by Brian Cowell.
For about the 10th time in the last 28 years, I come before you ordinarily with an applied signals-based page, summary of my remarks, I'll make it more spontaneous and get to the main core point that I've made many times before. Mario Cuomo used to say that the real power in politics is to set the terms of discussion. Unfortunately, year after year, the terms of discussion on transit increases have been set by the legislature and the governor and the MTA board in a way that keeps the relevant points off the table because the people with power don't want those points discussed. What is that? The main users of transit are not strap hangers, they are skyscrapers. Skyscrapers, buildings in Manhattan, that...
No, I'm brown.
All for them, I'm not against economic activity, far from it. But they're not paying their fair share. They're useless albatrosses without subways bringing people to their floors and giving them rental value and making them worth billions instead of being an expense to their owners. It was written up in 1915, over 100 years ago, by Frederick Allen, urban planning commentator, that a study showing that value increases along the route of the initial train in the first 10 years of transit system from 1904 to 1915 could have paid for the entire transit system with some left over using a special assessment just on the land near the train stations. Imagine how much value the transit system has created since then. But we're not talking about it because value capture and tax increment financing are issues that have to be dragged into discussions on PUC radio once in a while by people like me, and they're never raised by politicians. These are sources of funding for a $40 billion capital program to keep our city alive. These are sources of funding for a forty-billion-dollar capital program to keep our city alive. Set blood vessels. If you constrict the vessels, we're going to kill the organism. The real living beings here are the people of the city, and they depend on the economic functioning of the whole. The whole requires financing by its main beneficiaries. Landowners of buildings who would have sculptures instead of functioning skyscrapers if it weren't for transit, who they depend on transit as much as elevators or ventilation. They'd be useless objects. They have to pay their fair share based upon their distance from stations and how much they depend upon that station access to make their buildings not just more valuable, but useful at all. That should be the terms of debate here. You should not be talking about fare piece at all.
Thank you, sir. Brian Howell, followed by Cameron Bryan.
Good evening, members of the MTA board. My name is Brian Howell, and I live here in Brooklyn. I am the seventh generation in my family to live in New York City. Like many of my ancestors, I never learned how to drive, and for most of my life I have relied upon mass transit in our city. Since the time I was in high school, and I'm only thirty-one, the fare has gone up eighty-three percent and the cost of a monthly metro card ninety-two percent, far outpacing inflation and accompanied over the past six years by a two-hundred-and-thirty-seven percent increase. I forget where I'm going. I pay two dollars and seventy-five cents or three dollars for a ride when you can share a cab for the same amount and for only half the time. Why pay three dollars to take a train over the Manhattan Bridge when you can drive over it for free? For all of last week's distractions about fare evasion, it's painfully obvious to those of us who are transit-dependent that unreliable service is behind the drop in ridership. Abnormally long gaps in service, poorly maintained signals and timers, and poor adhesion to schedules delay trains. Unchecked congestion incentivized by poor city, street, and curb management prioritizing drivers despite their relatively small numbers compared to transit users' slowest buses. Adopting congestion pricing would allow us to create a reliable funding stream for transit while simultaneously reducing traffic congestion in New York City. The benefits of congestion pricing are more than financial. Reduced injuries and fatalities. London's congestion charge has been accompanied by a forty percent reduction in crashes in the congestion zone. Faster bus service, more curb space for loading zones, reduced emissions, and so on, and so on. There are many, many reasons why congestion pricing makes sense and almost none why it doesn't. Stop kicking the funding can road. Adopt...
Thank you. Cameron Bryan, followed by Sheila Vinesh. Cameron Bryan. Sheila Vinesh. Followed by Emily Blaz.
Good evening. I'm Sheila Vinesh, Brooklyn resident and writer. Tonight I am representing both the New York City Transit Riders Council and the commuter council. The councils are members of the Permanent Citizens Advisory Committee to the MTA and were established by the New York State Legislature in nineteen ninety-one as the official voice of the riders. Our, this is particularly true for riders who use both the LARR and New York City Transit systems and will be hit twice by the proposed fare increases. We want the fairest deal for the most frequent customers, regular commuters. While we recognize that the proposed fare hikes are likely to be imposed, there can be no service cuts. We can't go back to the old days of disinvestment leading to riders abandoning the system, the transit death spiral. The bottom line is that we expect any fare increase to term more reliable service. As the L-Tunnel reconstruction project began more lines, with the opening of East Side Access, Brooklyn-bound LARR riders will lose their one-seat ride during peak hours by happening in tunnels that will eventually provide a safer commute. We cannot support the changes that the scoot service will bring. All of the MTA's riders deserve a reliable and convenient ride. We understand that money needs are great and funding options are not. Thus, it is critical that recurring sustainable funding be identified for the entire transit system. MTA riders need the city and the state to work together to ensure that the transportation system is well-maintained and improved. Thank you.
Thank you. Emily Blaz, followed by Renee Reynolds. Emily Blaz. Renee Reynolds. Ms. Reynolds will be followed by Ting Ting Foo.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone, or good evening. Uh, my name is Renee Reynolds, I'm the transportation planner for the New York City Environmental Justice Alliance, and I'm here to testify on behalf of our nonprofit citywide membership network of grassroots organizations from low-income neighborhoods and communities of color in their struggle for environmental justice. So NIDJU has been working to empower its member organizations to advocate for improved environmental conditions against, uh, and against inequitable environmental burdens, and that includes inequitable transportation burdens. Um, our members represent or reflect the seventy-five percent low-income New Yorkers of color who rely on MTA's buses and the sixty-six percent who rely on the subway service to get around the city. And as such, access, reliability, and paramountly affordability are the most important aspects of our advocacy. So today we're here, I'm here, to, um, deeply disapprove of the MTA's proposal to hike fares on New Yorkers who are already strapped for cash. Consistent fare hikes have yet to yield the improvements in service that these commuters need and deserve. Um, and so we're asking, what is going to be different this time around? Um, the MTA's financial issues have much more to do with mismanagement of funds than the negative rhetoric around fare beaters, um, and, uh, and continuing need to increase fun, uh, excuse me, fares. Since two thousand and twelve, New Yorkers have paid three fare hikes, and yet the service grows more and more abhorrent, leaving commuters stranded on platforms, losing precious time and money, adding to mounting stress and impacting their financial stability. Slower and unreliable public transportation leads to longer commutes, less room for error, lateness at work, lack of job, low date is the answer. We think that the MTA should work with the state legislature to pass congestion pricing to, um, to create the, to generate the revenue needed to fund the system sustainably, and we don't think that doing it on the backs of the commuters is the answer.
Thank you.